From the morning session, we are continuing from the recess. The Committee on Finance and Government Operations is back from recess, and we're now going to resume today's public hearing. The time is now 2:03, 14:03, 2 o'clock in the afternoon and 3 minutes. Before I go on to announce the bills that are going to be heard today, as I did in the morning session, there are two bills that by the request of the author are going to be rescheduled, and that is Bill 16-38COR, the prime sponsor being Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and that's an add to Act, a new, add to, an act to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 2 Title IV Guam Code Annotated Relative to Reporting Requirements for the Use of Unclassified Employment. And then the other bill also sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores Perez is Bill 17-38COR, an act to amend 1913 of Chapter 19 Title 1 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Procedures for Implementation of Audit Recommendations by Agencies. So these bills will be rescheduled by my committee as soon as the author gives me the green light. Okay, this afternoon, so now this afternoon, the committee will hear testimony for the following bills: Bill 14-38COR and Bill 47-38COR. Bill 14 is authored by Senator Telo Titegui, and it is an act to amend 1909C of Chapter 19 Title 1 Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Duties of the Public Auditor. And then the other bill we'll be hearing is Bill 4738, and it is sponsored by Senator William A. Parkinson, and is an act to add a new 1909C1, 1909C2, 1909C3, and 1909C4 to Chapter 19 of Title 1 Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Duties of the Public Auditor. At this time, I would also like to recognize the colleagues who have joined us today: Vice Speaker and Vice Chair of this committee, Senator Tony Arata, Senator Sean Gumitauta, Senator Telo Titegui, and Senator William Parkinson. Thank you for joining me. And today, we have the treat of having our former Speaker, Speaker Cruz, and the public auditor here, and I'm, uh, thank you for joining us, and I know he'll be testifying soon. Okay. For those who are now just joining us, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of Illegisitur in Guam's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for the record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the bill on the agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Pursuant to Section 11.107 of the 38th Guam Legislature Standing Rules, a chairperson may order the removal from the hearing of a committee or subcommittee of any person who is not a member of Illegisitur in Guam who fails to observe proper decorum. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in the immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, I would now invite Senator Telo Titegui to make an opening statement on her bill 14-38COR. You're recognized, Senator.
Seduzmasi, Mr. Chair, and buenos en hafa de to my colleagues and everyone joining us in person and online for this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding this very important bill, Bill 14-38, which is an act to amend 1909C Chapter 19 Title 1 of Guam Code Annotated Relative Duties of the Public Auditor. Mr. Chair, I initially introduced the bill in the 37th Guam Legislature, and I'm now reintroducing it in the 38th Guam Legislature. This bill amends Guam law to strengthen the accountability of government agencies by enforcing timely submissions of audits, of audited financial reports. As senators, one of our primary responsibilities is to oversee the government's annual budget. And to do this effectively, we rely on accurate and timely financial data. The annual audit report provides critical analysis, ensures the credibility of financial statements, and helps us, assists in both past performances and future obligations. By law, the annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, is due by June 30th each year. However, Guam has failed to meet this deadline 13 times since 2000. The Organic Act explicitly requires the governor to submit this report to Congress and to the U.S. Department of Interior within 120 days of the fiscal year's end. Despite this federal mandate, we continue to see delays, delays that are hindered, that hinder our ability to make informed decisions. In contrast, the Consolidated Review and Expenditure Report, the CRER, which provides a monthly snapshot of government finances, is constantly submitted, is consistently submitted on time, except since this new financial management system has come in, it has been delayed somewhat. But this demonstrates that the timely financial reporting is achievable with proper accountability measures in place and a fine to the director in the event it does not meet that time. Bill 14-38 introduces a $250 fine, which during the time of debate on the floor in the 37th Guam Legislature, many of my colleagues wanted to increase this amount. But as I mentioned earlier about the CRER report, this financial, this fine is the same as when the director of BBMR does not submit in a timely fa, in a timely fashion. So the depart, this fine of 250 on department and agencies heads who, who fail to submit audit reports on time to the Office of Public Accountability, OPA, which all fines collected will be directed to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, Hospital Operations Fund, ensuring that increased accountability leads to tangible benefits for our community. Last term in the 37th Guam Legislature recognized that this legislation is a necessary step to enforcing compliance with the Organic Act of Guam and ensuring transparency in the government finances. Unfortunately, it was vetoed by the governor, and the override attempt fell short. Some colleagues, I'm hoping, who was in the 37th Guam Legislature, who voted no to override this veto, will change their mind this time around. I hope this term will be different. We have a responsibility to ensure that our government agencies are held accountable for their financial obligations and that taxpayer dollars are managed with integrity and transparency. It's time we uphold these standards and demand accountability from our directors. I look forward to the comments or recommendations that can strengthen this bill's intent and effectiveness. Seduzmasi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titegui, for your opening. At this time, we have welcomed forward, as I said earlier, former Speaker BJ Cruz and also currently the public auditor, as well as his very senior staff, not in age, but in years of, of working, Vince Duñez. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the gentleman for their testimony on the bill. Seduzmasi.
Thank you very much, Hafaday, Senator Duñez, and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 14-38. As we did with Bill Number 213-37, which was ultimately vetoed by the governor of Guam and failed to be overridden by the 37th Guam Legislature, the Guam Office of Public Accountability continues to support the intent of this bill. We also acknowledge that Bill 47-38 has also been introduced that has a similar intent on imposing a fine or penalty for untimely submission of information needed for audits. In comparing the two bills, we see that Bill 14-38 is requiring a deadline for all financial program information to be submitted to the OPA to carry out all duties and functions necessary and imposes a $230 fine against a general manager, director, or head of agency for every 30 days they do not meet the reporting requirement. The fact of the matter is that audits have been extremely delayed due to various reasons, informa, um, reasons. Information and data not being timely submitted to the auditors is one of the main reasons. As we noted in financial highlights to the financial, to the fiscal year 2023, government of Guam financial audit issued on February 8th, 2025. The FY 2023 financial audit would issue, was issued one year and five months since the end of FY 23, ended in September 20, 30th, 2023, and eight months after the mandatory submission date of June 30th, 2024. The delayed issuance of the FY 23 and continue, began in 2021 and continued in 23. The delay in 23 was due to the delayed issuance of the FY 2022 financial audit reports, delayed issuance by other agencies and financial audit reports, and lack of responsiveness from GovGuam agencies to audit, to audit requests. GovGuam agencies challenged with a lack of qualified audit accounting staff affect the quality and timeliness of this, of information submitted and contracted financial audit, uh, to the, contracted financial auditors. Reconciliations were still going, ongoing in the government auditing standards bureau on Number 87 in November 2024, or a full year after the end of 2023. Additionally, GovGuam did not assess the impact of the potential liabilities of Medicaid, medically indigent program and the Medicaid transactions for FY 2023. For FY 2024, the financial audits of several component units, like the Guam International Airport Authority and the Government of Guam Retirement Fund, I believe the Guam Waterworks Authority and the Guam Power Authority are awaiting the OPEB financial report and disclosure from the Department of Administration in order for their audits to be completed. OPA's continuous follow-up with DOA has continued to go unattended. The OPEB report has been one of the main delays for financial audits in previous years. Delays in getting data, data and information in, is also affecting our performance audits. There have been several instances this past year where OPA staff has had to continuously follow up on requested information and data from, from the agencies. This has gotten to the point where I have introduced my, where I have instructed my staff to start requesting the information and data via the Freedom of Information Act request. This way, agencies would have to be mandated to provide the requested information within four day, working days, a receipt of the FOIA, or at most 10 additional days. And as one of the, some, you may know, it also includes a $1,000 fine for failure to comply. The continued trend of requested data and information has delayed impacts OPA's ability to discharge our duties as outlined in Title 1 of GovGuam, the Government Code Annotated. It is a measure to help us address this issue by providing a consequence to any department or agency that fails to submit information that is vital and necessary for the office to discharge its duties. However, we do leave it to this legislature to decide on what the fine or penalty should be as a consequence. We thank Senator Titegui and her co-sponsors and this legis, this committee for considering this legislation. We hope for its expedited passage and hopefully its acceptance at some point. Thank you.
Seduzmasi, public auditor, Mr. Speaker. Vince Duñez, do you have anything to add?
No, he said it all.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, I'm going to recognize the bill's sponsor to be able to ask any questions or make some comments on the bill. Senator Titegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, we've been down this road before on the public hearing for this bill. And I just want to make it clear for those who are listening that, you know, it's still, as you see this public auditor, the, the bill that was introduced still gives you the ability to whether an agency is in a certain circumstance where they are not able to get it beyond their control, to get the audit to you in time or that documentation is missing for one way or another, that you still have the authority whether they would meet your deadline that you requested for. And if they don't, then the fine would be assessed. Do you see this legislation still giving you that leeway to individuals?
Yes, and I want it understood by the directors that I, I don't want to be collecting fines.
Right.
I, I, you know, I, that, that's not my, my purpose. But I really do just wish that they would just respond. And we're very reasonable. Every time we get, we give it, we tell them we want it within two weeks, and they ask for an extension. I almost always say, go ahead and grant them that extension, unless it gets to the point where the extension is because they're traveling or they're bored. I'm like, somebody has to be here to, to see this through, you know? And I haven't traveled much since I've taken this position because of the fact that these audits have to get out. And though I have a very capable assistant, it shouldn't, I mean, I need to be here to push it through and to sit there. Some agencies, I've actually had to resort to behaving like I was when I was a juvenile court judge. And I have weekly status hearings, I mean, status conferences with them to try to push out the, the, their audits. And by contract, the, the, all the audits of the component units are supposed to be finished by February 28th of every year, except for leap year when it's 2029. And the reason for that is because I want to get the GovGuam audit out by March 31st of, of every year. Unfortunately, things have, the OPEB has been the major problem. And I'm hoping that the Director of Administration will get the OPEB for the '24 out and to start the process to get the OPEB for the '25 out so that by the end of the, by the end of this fiscal year, that the, that the department can include the OPEB initially in their trial balance right off the top, rather than waiting until January or February, whenever it's going to come out. And so I, I, I thank you for, for trying to give us this authority to do this. And I'm reading it a little bit further. I'm expanding its power. I know you're giving me the authority to, to fine, but I'd also like to be able to use it to, to get information for my performance audits because that really is the main function of, of, of the office. And so I'm hoping that I, I'm not overreading or reading beyond what you're, what you intended, but to have the authority to do both would, would, would be great. And, and just so that, yeah, I, I thank you very much for reading the Organic Act. I know every time you read that, I'm embarrassed that we're not complying with the law and the Organic Act. But some of the agencies are actually suffering. PBS, because of the delayed audit two years ago, and then a delayed audit la, last year, there, they were, they were penalized, 1% of their grant for every month that they were delayed, and so they lost $12,000. $12,000 for GovGuam is peanuts. For GPA and for the airport, it may be peanuts. But for an agency like PBS that really depends on the largesse of this legislature and, and contributing donors from outside, $12,000 is a lot of money that they, they've lost in their grant because they lost 1% per month. And so we need to get these things out, and I'm trying to, to comply with the law. In fact, move it up to March so that when you start your budget process, it's here. But I, we need cooperation.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And I did notice that you mentioned FOIA and that the penalty is $1,000 if somebody does not provide you that information. So would you have any objections if we raised it from $250 to $1,000 for the penalty?
I, I'm not going to, that's a decision you guys have to make. I, I don't want to have anything to do with that. I'm just saying, if, if it's just a consequence that, that could be, could be imposed on them so that they, they know, and it's not that I want to do it, you know? It's just, I'm just trying to help to get these things out. And if they could just respond, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seduzmasi, Senator Titegui. And you know, you gave us a great briefing. And I'll discuss that a little bit more later, earlier last week, you know, on this, on this issue, actually, this Monday, this past Monday. And I asked this question when we were meeting with you. For the listening public, because I think it's a very important piece of what you're discussing on the OPEB, can you just explain that or, you know, define that acronym? And then maybe just explain a little bit about what that report is?
OPEB is the Other Post-Employment Benefits. Retirees get health insurance, life insurance, dental insurance, and all of those benefits that they get, you know, whatever benefits they get. All of that information is sent to an actuary in the States, and that actuary compiles all that information. And they determine that that, that future cost, that cost has to be in the, in the, in the financial statement and the financial audit of all the departments and how much it would cost. Right now, I think the OPEB is reading that the cost of government-wide is like $151 million. You know, because that's a future, that, that's a future cost of how much it costs to have us, since it's not, there's no, there's no, what do you call it? Trust fund that has been implemented to, to pay for that. It's an annual appropriation from this legislature. So that, and the, and the $2,000 that they get for their, for their, all of those things are, are, are factored into, or 2,200, I guess now. That's all factored into this, how much all of these post-employment benefits are costing or will be costing the government in the future and what that liability is.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, OPA, because I, I think that's a really critical thing, obviously, and a critical component for us. As many of us know, been through a number of budget cycles. This time, I'd like to recognize our colleague, Senator Sean Gumitauta, for comments or questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, former speaker and public auditor, for being here with us. And I appreciated your effort in the oversight hearing to start off this term. And I'm sure that's moving quite along in terms of what has to happen with Guam homeland security and civil defense. And so I just wanted to tell you publicly, I do appreciate the work of your office in, in these audits. And I'm thinking down the road that these audits that your office does will be doing a lot more of these types of looks at our agencies and the work that they do with a little bit more of a fine team comb here in this 38th Guam Legislature. I only had one question, if I could, and I just want to ask, an example of a local law that requires agency heads to use their personal funds to pay a fine as a result of their failure to comply with a statutory mandate, 5GCA 10112, or penalties for non-disclosure. If the court finds that a public official's decision to refuse disclosure is not justified under the Sunshine Reform Act of 1999, the court shall order the public official to pay a fine of $1,000. The fine shall be a personal expense for the responsible official, and in no way shall the fine be paid by the agency or the government of Guam. So I just wanted to ask, what information, I'm not sure if you can answer, but what information is available on the number of court orders that have been issued within the past three or five, three to five years requiring agency heads to pay the $1,000 non-disclosure penalty and the corresponding collections total?
The only one that I can remember in the last, it's more than actually five years, was I think I remember the former director of land management was fined and had to pay. There, there was one that, that I know of where they, they actually had to pay. Yeah. It, it, it doesn't happen often. I mean, you know, the court, it, one, rarely does it go to court. And two, rarely does the court decide that it's going to impose a fine.
Got it, thank you so much. That's my only question, Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Gumitauta. This time, I recognize Senator Parkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I have no questions, thank you.
Seduzmasi. And then, this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Montanani.
I also have no questions.
Seduzmasi. Senator Barnett, you're recognized at this time.
Seduzmasi, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, public auditor Cruz and Mr. Duñez for your testimony. But I just can't help feeling a little bit of déjà vu right now because we've been this way before. I was actually a cosponsor on the version of this bill that was introduced to the 37th Guam Legislature. And the bill saw heated debate, but we did vote to pass it. And I know you know all this. But it was subsequently vetoed by the governor. And then I was actually surprised to see the flipping of the votes on the override attempt. But I can see my colleague Senator Parkinson's that obvious change of heart with the introduction of this very similar measure to Senator Titegui's. And I will support the measure again. I'll remain consistent, but I, I wanted to ask, so I know that we're talking about deadlines for audits, the annual for audits, the annual audits, some of the performance audits, but I'm curious about what type of difficulty you get from agencies when you're conducting these, and I forget the term you use, for example, like with the Guam Department of Education and the textbook audit and other audits similar that aren't necessarily the annual audits. Do you have trouble getting information, documents that you need in those types of instances, dealing with those types of audits?
We have, and yes, we do. In that one, it was just with a merry-go-round of directors that, superintendents and deputies that they've had and not, people not feeling, some of the lower positions. Sometimes it's difficult to get them to respond. I know Vince is doing the, the textbook audit, and I think he could speak to that more closely, but it's been really, it's, sometimes it's just impossible to get, get them to respond to it, you know? I mean, we'll go out, we'll, we'll look, and then we need to follow up and we need to, we need to find, like in, in that one, we need to get the requests from the various schools because we have to compare. How many schools requested this book? Which schools requested this book? You know, so we know who requested and how, how many. And if, if we know who and how many, then if they, if the who and how many comes out to be 4,000 books, then why do we purchase 10,000? You know, that's, that's a thing that we have, we have to, we have to compare what the request was to what was ordered, and if there was a diff, if there's a difference, why was there a difference? And to try to get all that information is a difficult part. We can go out and we can count the number of books, we photograph all the books that we want, but getting the documents so that we can say that we know that school X, Y, and Z ordered a total of 4,000 books, but for some reason, 10,000 was ordered, in the same way that when we did the, the laptop, we were trying to figure out why were 27,000 students, do you have 53,000 computers? You know, it's just...
Right. And I think just specifically with the textbook audit, and as you know, because I've communicated this to you, there's absolutely a huge disconnect compared to what I'm hearing from the staff at the school level versus what I'm seeing in reported media articles about management and what they're sharing with you. But I, you know, just kind of wrap it up in a, in a bow, I'm just wondering if barring specific timelines for submission of information relative to audits that you conduct, like the textbook audit, is there any way we can somehow configure the timeline and the penalties associated with what's in the bill and apply them to different types of audits?
The very same thing. I, I'm reading it to mean that, to, to give me the authority to, to also use it for performance audits, for any requests for audits that our office is conducting, any requests for information, whether it's for a performance audit or if to finish a compliance audit. If, if the, if the external auditor for a financial audit wants to get some information from Public Health and Social Services and I tell them, I need that information by a certain date, then please make sure that it gets back to me on that, then yes, I mean, you know, or in the performance audit with DOE, to have that authority to be able to say, I can, I can give you a reasonable date, and I'm not going to ask for it for tomorrow.
Right.
I, I, we're always reasonable and, and reasonable in giving extensions, but if, if it, if it just gets too crazy, I'd like to be able to say enough. And Vince has reminded me numerous times that, sir, you really don't have to, if you want, you can just issue the report and say they're not responding, and so therefore we don't have a report, we, we can't, we can't issue this, this audit. And I'm going, yeah. I, I really have difficulty doing that, but I keep trying to pull teeth.
So that you, you believe you can apply this bill to audits that aren't just necessarily our annual Guam audit?
Yeah, it doesn't say financial directly.
Right.
May I add also to the point that you're making about the reasonable request for information. Whenever we as auditors request for information, we're actually getting it, what, you know, like what's the question? The question is what type of information are we trying to request? With not only the textbook audit, but with every audit that we ever engage in, the first thing we look for is what we call the criteria, like what is supposed to be happening? What are the public laws that are governing whatever specific program that we're auditing? What are the rules and regulations? What's in the, what's basically in the Guam code? So all of those things, that's what's driving what is supposed to be happening. So for example, with the textbook audit, we were actually looking at the SOPs that they have on, on, on their website on, and so when we were generating a list of requests for information, we're just going, oh, they need this, it says it in their SOP, they need that, they need this, they're supposed to submit this to this particular department within the organization. So, okay, let's go ask for that. So these are items that they should already have in their, in their files or maintaining. So when we requested for these documents, it was like, okay, we would like it by this certain date. In, in some cases, they would request for an extension because of, you know, lack of manpower to pull all the records that we're looking at. And we just had a meeting earlier just talking about the automation of, of, of documents that are within an organization. So yes, there are times where they would need to pull, you know, manual records, and we are reasonable, like the public auditor has mentioned, because, you know, we, there's, there's a lot of work at our office, a lot of stuff that we can move on to while we're waiting for that information. So we have multiple projects that any, on any given day, an auditor is working on. In the instance of the financial audit, so I just talked about the performance audits, but in the instance of the financial audits, we have a lot of agencies that have their own accounting department, and this is their day-to-day job, right? This is what they get paid for. All the financial audits, whenever they're going through it, it's like, kind of like, it's like we've done, it's a cycle. You go through a cycle and all of the information that they should have already, like, so for example, the first item that the financial auditors or the external auditors, in this case Ernst &amp; Young, that they ask for is the trial balance. This is something that the auditor, I'm sorry, the accountants within every organization should be able to provide upon request. In some cases though, it does take, again, maybe the lack of manpower or the lack of experience or expertise within the organization. And that's where we have talked about for many, many years about the accounting infrastructure of all of these organizations, but it all go, all boils down to with management and their ability to staff these, the organization with, you know, the competent people that, that they need in order to do, to do that. But it's a cycle. It's something that they know is going to come and be requested for. So, okay, if you're unable to provide it, we do give reasonable expectations.
A little more than reasonable. I think some of my colleagues up here would, would agree with. Thank you for that. And, you know, we want to support you and we want to give the ability, because you are reasonable, but I mean, just to be honest with each other, sometimes these agencies are, you know, legally stonewalling you and, you know, getting away with it without the consequences of a penalty. So Sidozmasi, you, public auditor, Mr. Duñez, and again, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Burnett. Having all of our colleagues to have asked questions and made comments, I will now go to the, the mover of Bill 14-38 for her closing statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you for hearing this, this particular bill. As you know, that we're coming up to budget time, and if we can get this bill out on the session agenda, then I think maybe in the following year, we could, there's more of fire to their feet, per se, to get them to get these reports in on time. It's about accountability and transparency that we've all been talking about, and then it's important that this body, you know, acts upon it and, and create legislation that does just that. So that being said, Mr. Chair, I look forward to having this bill put on the session floor as soon as possible as we approach the, the budget session. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, Senator Taitegui. So at this time, having completed that, we will move to the next bill on the agenda, Bill Number 47-38 COR, once again introduced by William A. Parkinson, Senator Parkinson, and it's an act to add a new 1909C1, 1909C2, 1909C3, and 1909C4 to Chapter 19 of Title I, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Duties of the Public Auditor. And at this time, I will recognize the sponsor for his opening statement on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hafaday and good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to thank you all for being here today to provide testimony and insights into this very public process. I'd also like to thank the chairman, Senator Chris Duñez, for holding this hearing today. Bill Number 47-38 COR seeks to strengthen the financial accountability by ensuring that all government agencies submit their required audits in a timely manner. These audits are not just routine documents. They serve as the foundation of responsible governance. Providing transparency on government spending and enabling accurate budgeting ensures that taxpayer dollars are allocated effectively and efficiently. By law, the public auditor is required to complete annual audits of all government entities no later than June 30 for the prior fiscal year. However, we have seen reoccurring delays in the submission of these audits. These delays have had a direct impact on the legislature's ability to engage in fiscal In fact, we received the audit for fiscal year 2023 less than two weeks ago. When these audits are late, it affects our ability to project revenues accurately and in prioritizing critical services like healthcare, education, and public safety. Ultimately, it prevents us from fulfilling our duty to the people of Guam. To address this issue, Bill Number 47-38 introduces a clear and necessary accountability measure. If any agency director fails to submit the required financial audit documents by the deadline, their salary and benefits will be withheld until compliance is achieved. Bill Number 14-38, introduced by my colleague Senator Taitegui, also improves to, aims to improve compliance. While we recognize the intent behind that measure, I believe Bill 47 is the more effective and enforceable approach. Senator Taitegui's bill imposes a $250 personal fine on agency directors for missing deadlines with an additional $250 every 30 days of continued non-compliance. However, history has shown that fines alone are often ineffective deterrents when it comes to government accountability. Directors may choose to absorb these fines as a cost of doing business, especially if they believe they can justify the delays. $250 comes up to $3,000 a year. That could be made up in a single raise, meaning we could basically just ignore it completely with that. In contrast, Bill 47 enforces a direct and meaningful consequence, the suspension of an agency director's salary and benefits until the required audits are submitted, because failure to do so immediately impacts the director's compensation rather than imposing fines that might be delayed or disputed. And it does not turn our public auditor into a fee collector. Bill 47 also ensures parity in accountability standards by holding agency directors to the same level of responsibility as senators and the governor. I would not impose this penalty if it were not held to the same standard I hold myself. Under existing law, if General Appropriations Bill is not passed by August 31st, senators' salaries are withheld. Likewise, the governor is subject to similar accountability measures regarding budget deadlines. If our elected officials are required to meet financial deadlines or risk losing their salaries, then agency directors who are responsible for overseeing public funds must be held to the same standard. And while Senator Taitegui's bill directs collected fines to the Guam Memorial Hospital Operations Fund, this approach does not guarantee timely compliance and may lead to proclaim, prolonged delays in audit submission while directors contest or ignore fines. Bill 47 does not focus on collecting penalties, but rather is ensuring audits are submitted on time so that the legislature can make sound budgetary decisions. As somebody who lives under this current sword of Damocles over his own head, let me assure you, the legislature moves mountains to make sure that budget is done on time. I aim to put the same sense of urgency in our agency heads. The timely submission of audits is not an unreasonable expectation. It is a fundamental responsibility of agency directors. These audits provide essential financial data that allows the legislature to allocate resources effectively, ensuring that critical public services like healthcare, education, and infrastructure are funded appropriately. When agencies fail to submit audits on time, it creates uncertainty, inefficiency, and a lack of transparency, making it harder for us to govern. And at the heart of this bill is a simple but critical principle. Government officials must be accountable to the people they serve. That's it. By ensuring agency directors meet their deadlines, we are ensuring that our government functions efficiently and that every taxpayer dollar is accounted for. Once again, I extend my gratitude to Chairman Duñez for convening this hearing and to everyone here today to provide testimony. I look forward to a productive discussion. Thank you very much, sir, and I yield the rest of my time.
Sidozmasi, Senator Parkinson. So at this time, once again, we will recognize former speaker and public auditor B.J. Cruz and Vince Duñez for any testimony they may have on this bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And before I read my testimony, I've done this in the past, in the, with the past legislatures. I have apologized to the speaker and to the chairman of the committee for the late submit, issuance of the audits. And I assure you, Mr. Chairman, that it was never my intent to, to have these late. In fact, I have on my own moved the date up from June 31st to March 31st and written it into each of the contracts that we've negotiated with EY and all of the audit firms that do this, because I recognize the need to get this. And it pains me that over the last two years, that it, it's not gotten out in a timely fashion, and I will accord to you the same that I did to the previous chairman and apologize on behalf of the office that these things not have not gotten out, but to assure you that I have tried everything in my power to try to get things out in a timely fashion, that it was, it's never been my intent to not get these things out in a timely fashion. And I have, I just wanted you to know that I apologize for... I apologize for the delayed receipt of issuance of those audits. On Bill forty-seven dash thirty-eight, Hafde, Senator Duñez, and committee members, thank you for the opportunity provided testimony on Bill forty-seven dash thirty-eight. The Guam Office of Public Accountability supports the intent of the bill. We acknowledge that Bill fourteen thirty-eight has been introduced and that a similar intent of imposing a fine or penalty for untimely submission of information needed for audits. In comparing the two bills, we see that Bill forty-seven dash thirty-eight more specifically directed towards setting deadlines, financial documents, financial audit documents necessary for the issuance of the annual audit, Guam fiscal year audit, and imposes a suspension of compensation, salary benefits, or other enumeration of any agency director or head of government, GovGuam entity, who fails to submit the required financial audit documents in the prescribed deadline or revised deadline if an extension is granted. We are seeing the financial audits in the past two years continue to be delayed due to various reasons. One has been the information and the data not being submitted to the auditors in the timely manner. Bill forty-seven specifically addresses the extremely delayed government audit that needs to be completed by June the thirtieth. The fiscal year 2023 audit was issued February the eighth, eight months past the June thirty deadline. And the FY twenty-two was issued November the twenty-first of 2023, five months past the deadline. Each year, OPA oversees the financial audit to twenty-seven different entities, which are contracted to private auditing firms, accounting firms. The GovGuam audit, which we call the big audit, incorporates the financial information for the agencies and component units of the government of Guam. This means that in order for the audit to be, the big audit to be completed, all the other component units have been done at least a month in advance. OPA has done its best to expedite the financial audits by moving up the deadline contractually for audits to be completed February twenty-ninth for the component units and for March thirty-first, the GovGuam audit. Bill forty-seven dash thirty-seven really is necessary to further assist the OPA in expediting the financial audits by instituting consequences for agency directors or heads of GovGuam entities who failed to submit the requested financial audit documents by the prescribed deadline or revised deadline if an extension is granted. However, we do leave to this legislature the decision on what that fine or what that penalty should be as a form of consequence. The continued delay of the financial audit hinders this legislation, the Office of Finance and Budget, to have all the data needed to be used to deliberate on an operating budget and needs to be relevant government agencies. We thank Senator Parkinson for introducing this bill. We believe this bill will help getting things done more timely and decisions made to have more information in front of all of you. Again, thank you very much, senators, for the introduction of this bill, and we support it.
Sí, sí, senador, Mr. Speaker, and of course, your office. At this time, I will now yield to the author for any questions or comments of the panel. Senator Parkinson.
I just have one question, sir. I've just had some feedback from the community regarding what else can we do to further help you do your job? And one of the things people have asked me is it would be better if we gave you ability to further enforce or investigate or prosecute directly yourself? Any instances of corruption you see is something I've heard asked by the community. And so I just want to get your input if there's any further thing we can do to help you do your job better.
Thank you, Senator, for that question. In the last several years, even before you came to the legislature, there have been senators that have asked whether or not I wanted the office to have prosecutorial powers. And as an auditor and someone wishing to make sure that we can streamline the operation of government, I really don't believe that there should be two entities doing the same thing. Ideally, one, the AG, should be the one to do this, and there shouldn't be a separate prosecution unit at the OPA. When General Moreland came in, he and I spoke about what he was planning on doing. And he mentioned to me the fact that he was planning on doing investigative grand juries and that he felt that he had that authority to do it. Within a month of his coming into office, he did impannal an investigative grand jury. Unfortunately, it was challenged, and it went up to the Supreme Court. Fortunately, the Supreme Court, Justice Last December, thirty-first, issued its opinion, its decision on the lower court. And both of them agree that the Attorney General does have the authority to impannal an investigative grand jury to move forward with the information that we provide them. His office has now come to us. We have a working relationship with his new prosecutor. We've just requested information together just recently. He's provided us requests on what he needs to be able to continue an investigation to prosecute one of the cases that has been submitted to him. And I think it's moving. And I'd like to be able to give him the opportunity with his investigative grand jury authority now under his belt to see whether or not that'll move these things further without having duplicate prosecution offices at the PD and at the DNA building, the Bank of Hawaii building, and the ITC building. I mean, I can't in good conscience do that.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, sir. You know, when I thought through the issue, I came to the same conclusion that it was better to let you specialize and focus on this one area of specialization. And if you find anything, kick it up the chain and let them do their jobs. But I did tell constituents that I would ask for your input and ask you about it. So I consider my duty done in that regard. So thank you for answering my question and thank you for your testimony. I'll save the rest of my thoughts for close, Mr. Chair.
Sí, sí, senador Parkinson. At this time, I recognize Senator Guma Toto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you to the panel. Just have one or two questions. Now, the bill, and we've heard it throughout the last hour, but the bill states that there have been recurring delays in the submission of the government of Guam's annual audit, resulting in the legislature's lacking essential financial data during the budget discussions. The bill further argues that the absence of the up-to-date information impairs the legislature's ability to accurately project revenues and allocate funds effectively, making the projections less accurate and hindering priority initiatives such as funding critical government services. Recognizing that both sections of law suspending the compensation and benefits for senators and the governor provide an exemption in the event the annual operating budget for the government of Guam is rolled over from the previous year, how will a carryover budget impact the provisions of Bill forty-seven dash thirty-eight?
A carryover budget or a two-year budget would mean that all the information is timely and there would be no fine.
Okay. And sticking with that, with the legislature moving forward with the adoption of annual budgets for fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 without having timely access to an audit each for fiscal year 2023, that was just released on February eighth of this past year and fiscal year 2024, what value is there if the legislature considered adopting individual spending plans for two fiscal years at a time, recognizing that senators will have every opportunity to adjust these budgets at any time based on changes in revenue collections and economic conditions? So it's kind of an extension of what you mentioned of two-year budgets?
I was at one time the chairman of this committee, and we thought, we considered the this is not with my hat as the public auditor or just my own personal opinion. The good thing about having a two-year budget is that during the second year, you're not having to deal with a budget during the campaign period and consequently, the pressures that you have during campaign period. I think you saw in this last legislature the bill that went through that had a Christmas tree at the very end that had a hundred and some million dollars worth of appropriations with only about thirty-some million dollars worth of funds in order to take care of everybody's Christmas request on that budget because of, I mean, not Christmas, it was actually campaign. And so it saves on that, but that's a decision you make. I'm no longer in that seat.
Thank you, former speaker. And like I've said in previous hearings, it's good to have former lawmakers that are sitting down there and helping us to help create good public policy. But thank you so much for your time and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time to be here today.
Senator, the one thing that I think you ought to know and I implore, please, we spent over four hundred million, almost a half million, to have this audit done. Okay, four hundred thousand to have this done. Please take the time to read the, maybe not the entire audit, but at least the highlights. And the highlights may be long, but within the highlights, there are interesting little nuggets that if you stop and read it carefully and not skim, you'll find things that'll hit you in the face. And you realize, oh, there it is, or there that is. Or you will notice that in the highlights this year, we point out the fact that this year, for the first time in several years, there is now a budget to actual listing where the administration admits that the budgeted amount that you gave them was this and the actual amount that they spent during the fiscal year was this. And you can look to point out where there were differences. Were they overspent now? How and why they did that? Or more importantly, were they didn't? Were they, they claim, we're going to die, we're going to die, we're going to die because we don't have money? And you've got to appropriate more money for us, more money, more money, more money. And then when you look at the budget to actual, they didn't spend three or four million dollars at the end of the fiscal year. You will at least be able to point out to them, you're saying we didn't give you enough money last? But last year, when we gave you that amount, you didn't spend three million. What happened? Where? So when they stopped doing the budget to actual, a number of people complained about it. And so I thank the legislature for including the provision to require that that be put back in it. It is supposed to be in it under financial statement reports. That's supposed to be there. It was conveniently dropped for a couple of years. But it's now back in. But please, and the same thing to the public at large, please read the audits. And if you don't read the entire audit, at least read the highlights and read the findings. And the most recent part that we released was compliance report. Look at that, and you can see that the auditor points out in there where all the shortcomings are of the various agencies. The management letter points out what they're telling the management. You need to know that you need to have some decent accounts. And that you should have monthly reconciliations or at least quarterly reconciliation of your book, of your ledger. Don't wait until the end of the year and try to chase around. I've been trying to do that since the first day I got there was to try to tell them I want monthly, if not quarterly, closings. And it's just not being done, you know? And it just, if we could, if they could be, if they could be, if they would just learn, why I'm assured that the new GF MIS should be able to spit that out in a minute? Well, we'll see. But I'm hoping that it does because we're now trying to do the entrance conference for the big audit for twenty-four so we can get it out before June the thirtieth. And I'm hoping that the new GF MIS is going to be able to spit it out quickly. And I'm hoping that the fact that the fiscal year ended four months ago, that they've been using the time to get the trial balance ready so that when we have the entrance conference for the twenty-four, that they can, before the meeting, already transmit to EY the trial balance so that EY can say, because I mean, I miss the presentations that EY used to do in the beginning when the trial balances were ready. They would always have this presentation they would have. They'd be able to show me already at the very beginning on the first conference what it might look like. Now, because they don't have information, it's like, well, this is what we plan on doing because they're not getting the information in a timely fashion. But now that the GF MIS is, and we no longer have the excuse of the AS400 is the cause for all the problems, I'm hoping that we can get all the information on time so that we can get this done. But just read the audits and you'll be surprised in how much information is there.
Thank you, Senator Guma Toto. That completes your question, right? In the order that our colleagues arrived, I will recognize at this time Senator Taitegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you, public auditor, and of course, Vince, for all the hard work that you're doing. As you know, the push of
It's the hard work all my staff is doing.
Exactly. And please give them my regards too and my danklosi, sí, 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 for all that they do. I mean, we're on the same floor, the fourth floor, and I see them go by every once in a while and stop them and ask how things are going. And really appreciate their due diligence in ensuring that what needs to come out in a timely fashion does, to the best of their ability and to the best of your ability. And you know me, I'm one of those who do read the highlights and do see what's going on. Looking forward to this next one on Medicare coming out pretty soon. That's going to be very quite interesting to see. And definitely will be reading the whole report, not just the highlights on that one. But you know, again, this is legislation that puts fire to people's feet. And I don't know about the possibility of it getting through the governor. I mean, she had a hard time just with the $250, simple fine of $250. So you know, maybe we can raise it up to 500 or 1,000, you know? So I don't know how she's going to look at this bill coming across, taking salaries away from their employees. But you know, I mean, for me, whatever it takes to get the But, you know, I mean, for me, whatever it takes to get the job done, I mean, you get these directors who make six figures and sit behind a desk and want to take that responsibility and provide everything that's needed. And, you know, to be a good director, then they need to cough up this audit, you know, the information that's needed so that the government can run more efficiently and effectively as well as transparent. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Tadej Gue. And at this time now, I would like to recognize Senator Montanani. Please proceed.
Thank you. I just have to ask, do you find this ridiculous or necessary or both that we have to have bills like Bill 14 and 47 introduced for these government agency heads to do their jobs? Do we really have to litigate this? Put it in legislation and enact it into law? Again, ridiculous, necessary, or both?
Both. And, you know, I'm embarrassed that we have to do this. You know, I mean, when you guys passed the one with the 250 last year, I thought, that's great. It's not the 1,000. I could get it with the FOIA. And now I'm telling my staff, FOIA the information. If they don't do it, then we'll take them in for the 1,000. But, you know, just something. I just want them to just give me the information. That's all that I want. I don't, we don't need any money. We just need the information.
Thank you, BJ, and thank you to Senator Tadej Gue and Senator Parkinson for introducing both bills despite what the public auditor testified.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Montanani. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Barnett.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Boy, you guys are in a nice spot. You got senators falling all over themselves, introducing bills to try and give you the authority to do your job. But, you know, in my opinion, it also, we have to do ours. We have to, as well, in the 38 legislature, any legislature really, do our best to hold the executive branch agency directors accountable, you know, and not just leave it on you to do that. And so, yeah, it's going to be very interesting to see how these bills turn out on the session floor. And I too hope that both of these bills don't see the same fate as Bill 213-37. And, you know, we could introduce bills all day to assist the public auditor, but what really matters is getting them home and signed into law. So it's great to hear the support for these measures, but I really hope that that support translates into real results on the session floor with votes to pass these bills and to subsequently override any possible veto from Adaloupe. So Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity again. And have a great weekend, OPA.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. So having the panel, having an opportunity and all of our colleagues to ask questions and make comments, I will now offer the author to close on his bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was growing up and playing sports, my coaches always instilled in me three really simple rules. Always protect the team, be early, and avoid complaining. And I really want to talk about rule number two, be early. Why was that such an important rule for being a good team player? And my coach explained to me that being early showed a couple things. One, that it had a, that someone had a mastery of their self, that they were in control of themselves and their ability to be active agents in the world and participants. And that showing up early also showed mastery of the world, not just of their self, but mastery of the world, that they can control forces and events in their life, that they can get themselves to a time and place certain early. And so that the rule was really much deeper than what it looked like on its face. And that's how I feel about getting these audits done on time. It's not just about the good information we get from getting these audits in. Having these done on time means that our agency directors have mastery over their departments and have control in such a way that they can get the information they need in a orderly and timely fashion. It shows organizational competency. It shows so many good qualities for us to just be able to get their homework in on time. And for those that say the punishment of losing all of your pay and benefits is too harsh, I say to you, that is a punishment that I also hold for myself. It's a standard I hold to myself. So I am not asking for anything I wouldn't ask upon myself. These are civil service jobs, which means that we are here to serve the community. The community is not here to serve these directors with a good job. And if they cannot do the job, we will find someone that can. Guam is an island of patriots and people who want to serve their community, and we will get people to do their jobs. We must mandate it. Sun Tzu had always mentioned that a well-disciplined force would soon take on the characteristics of its leaders. I want our well-developed civil service force to develop the characteristics of our leadership that gets audits done on time. That's it. So if we talk about this going through a veto, I would absolutely support my version of this bill and fight for it through a veto override. The only reason I didn't fight for the other one was while I thought its heart was in the right direction, ultimately, I thought it did not go strong enough. Holding these agency directors to the same standard I hold myself and the governor sends a worthy signal how seriously we take the budgeting process. And I thank the good chair for once again hearing my bill and allowing these ideas to come to the public debate so that they could both find the strongest versions of themselves. So thank you again, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to further discussion on both of these bills.
You're welcome, Senator Parkinson. And before I make the closing statement on these bills having been heard, I want to make an announcement from Office of Finance and Budget, as well as myself, of the Chair of Appropriations. First of all, upon taking the responsibilities of this committee, one of the first things I did is I went and I met with Department of Administration Director and the staff. I visited TSA. I visited the Finance Division, and I visited HR. I asked the employees directly questions pertinent to what may be some of the holdups and what are the issues, particularly with the FMIS, as well as any insight they could have given me to the audit and the tardiness or extreme lateness of the audit. I will save that information because subsequently, our OPA, who has been open to all senators, and I want to thank you, Speaker, for your absolute openness. I know several of our colleagues have taken the opportunity to go in and get a briefing on the reading of the audits, the various audits. We asked you this past Monday for that courtesy, and you gave us an excellent presentation on the 2023 audit. You gave us a real detailed explanation on the highlights. And the reason why I'm saying this is this has set us up now for an informational briefing that will be coming here in a couple of weeks. My staff right now is diligently working on the questions and also compiling the information that we've received from both DOA and yourself, Mr. Auditor and Speaker. I believe this is the way to operate in doing due diligence to ensure that I've gotten both sides of the story, and the informational briefing will bear out exactly where we're at, what the reasons or lack of reasons for accomplishing the audits on time. At that time also, there will be a policy announcement coming out of my committee and Office of Finance and Budget that will put even more teeth into what's going to be required to get the audit out on time in June 30 of this year. So with that, everyone that's been here today, I thank you for your presence. Mr. Speaker in the OPA's office, Vince Duennas. Thank you for all my colleagues who have attended today. And so this will conclude this morning's public hearing on bills numbers 14-38 and 47-38. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on these bills within seven days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duennas, as chairman of the committee and mailed to 163 West Chalan Santopapa in Hagatnia. You may also send your testimonies to senator.duennas@guamlegislature.gov. This will conclude this afternoon's public hearing, and we are now concluding at 3:21. Sidoos Massey, and have a great weekend, everyone.